Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who are signed in by 7:10 by submitting a blue card to the Board Secretary and may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to those comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. Ms. Lukeman would like to come to speak to the board about special ed.
My name is Sam. My name is Sam Malukman. Imagine a dog laying down on the floor and imagine somebody taking their hand and pushing down on the dog's neck and while the dog's wriggling trying to get out. Now, I want you to imagine that dog is actually a five-year-old autistic non-verbal child face down on the ground. And that's the incident that happened outside of the office that went more bulls on 6/29 today, this year. Since then, I've been contacted by several families with allegations of child abuse by the teacher at when more bulls that stemmed over years. I'm not here to blame the teacher. I'm here to blame the system. My question is, where was the principal? The specific assault happened outside of the main office windows with several witnesses. It tells me they may have happened before. The parents complained about children having bruises on their backs, legs, and arms, some for years, suspecting abuse to their, at the school, to their doctors and therapists. It's documented. Where were the observations of the teacher? Who did them? And how was dismissed for years? Second, where was the paraplegic? She described, one of the paraplegics described this as an improper CPI hold when she was interviewed by the police. I want to define child abuse and assault to you all. Code MCL 380 dot 1312 clearly bans deliberate infliction of physical pain by hitting, patting, spanking, slapping, or any other physical force used as a means of discipline. You are mandated reporters as paraplegics as well as teachers, as well as everybody else. Lastly, and most damning, the special ed coordinator regarding the allegations of abuse. At least one parent advised her in June, just two weeks before the incident. She was told by the parent with an interpreter present as witness about abuse allegations by the teacher. And her response was that the teacher had had mental health issues that were since resolved and that there would be paraplegics in the classroom. So send your kid back. Since then, that incident occurred. First, the special ed coordinator disclosed personnel information improperly to a parent. Second, she dismissed the parent's concerns, a total and utter disrespect to us. Third, if the teacher had mental issues, why was she in a classroom with non-verbal autistic children? Why was she in any classroom? Fourth, if the special ed coordinator knew there were mental health issues with that teacher and she admitted, then that in itself is admission that she knew there was something wrong in the classroom from once on end. She did nothing about it. Fifth, she's a mandated reporter. She didn't report this. Sixth, she failed to follow your district policies to report this abuse to a compliance officer for investigation. Had she done her job, that incident would never have occurred. The compliance officer would have suspended the teacher immediately pending the investigation and that a child would not have been assaulted. But she didn't. She failed to do her job and it resulted in an atrocity and a crime against our most vulnerable children. Our demand is that she be fired. Our demand is that you create a system within the schools that mandates the reporting of child abuse by employees. Our demand is that these children are placed in classrooms that are equitable in size to general ed classrooms with working and accessible bathrooms and sinks instead of using a bathroom in the back of a custodian closet. The mistreatment of these children is unfair and unjust. Every board meeting, you read the Pledge of Allegiance and you say with liberty and justice for all. Our demand is that the HR properly investigated whether all of the children in that classroom were assaulted in the last two years and hold the administration, paraplegics, special ed coordinator accountable for their inactions. Silence is complicity. We demand that this board and the administration prescribe a termination policy for any person who is complicit in the abuse of our children. I've said this before, I should not exist as an advocate. It's your job to be the advocates for the students and put them first. I'm tired. I'm tired of going to the podiums. I'm tired of having to tell people to do the right thing. I'm tired of sending emails. You think that it's boring or it's lengthy for you to read my long emails. Imagine me having to write them for each and every child. We need to codify a policy that enjoys the reporting of abuse in our system, in our district. And we need accountability for the inaction by at least the one person who knew that there was abuse happening and allowed it to occur, continue, and possible assaults, other possible assaults to have occurred. Thank you for your time.
Next, Ms. Stephanie Butler would like to come to speak to the board about library book review.
Hello. I wanted to talk about what I've seen happen in other school districts around here locally lately. There's been boards and committees formed of makeup of parents, students, administration, whatever it is, that go in and do reviews on the library books in the school. Now, I don't have to stand up here and tell you what you already know, I know, in the life that's going on. And so my idea is let's put one of those boards together separate from the curriculum committee and let's get these, get in there and get these library books. I can't tell you how many hours I've spent online. You can see all the library books online and I'm not talking about the online libraries. I'm talking about our libraries and what kind of books are in there. I've seen just things that, you know, might be a great book for someone in college, but someone in high school, they can't even understand reading, writing, math, let alone such sensitive information, man-on-man rape and things like that. And that stuff doesn't belong in our schools, not for book banning, but I am for proper books being in the school for the children's age and what they can comprehend. So I suggest that we also do one of those and, you know, maybe it should have been done last month when I saw these other schools doing it. But it seems like there's so much happens at every board meeting. You get three minutes to talk, it's not enough. I want to go back to the school bus. I appreciate you bringing up that, Adele, about the special needs. I'm very disgusted that we're going to stand here and make excuses why we can't because I can almost guarantee that all the buses that we use to transport our special ed students also do not have wheelchair ramps, which is why when you guys say you're looking for bus drivers, I went to the Dearborn website, there's two job postings for bus, bus aide and one bus driver. And in the duties, it says must be able to lift wheelchairs on and off for special children. So why we can't use that electric bus for the same thing if we're already doing that on the regular fleet with no ramps doesn't make any sense. It just sounds like an excuse. And I would think, we should think twice about doing 10 electric buses and trading in 10 of our old fleet. I don't know if you noticed, the power was out on Telegraph and Cherry Hill, between Ford and Cherry Hill last night. Every time the wind blows, the south end goes out of power. We can't plug in air conditioners, portable units in our schools because our electrical system can't handle it. So we really need to slow down and fix the things that we already need to fix. And what I continue to stand here at the board and say is that we're jumping 20 miles ahead while we have all this stuff over here we still have to fix so we can say we're the first ones to do it. But let's be the best ones to do it. Let's stop being the first. Let's get the, get it right and down and fix all this other stuff. And once we do that and we have the infrastructure in place, we could have all these nice things. We could lead in that manner. But we're so far away from that, guys, in every aspect. And I'm agreeing with Ms. Lukeman, that stuff should never happen. I can't even believe that we, I had an issue with a teacher with mental health this year and I was shocked that they were not forced on medical leave with what I brought and said. And we cannot keep making excuses at the harm of our children. We have other things to do besides come to every board meeting and come up with these problems. Like, let's just get things fixed and solved. And before the school year, I just have one last thing before the school year starts. Months ago, we talked about making a school-wide policy when it comes to bathroom use. I've heard zip, zero, zilch out of that since then. And I am encouraging you guys to do something before school starts so that our girls are not going through the same things that they have been going through. It needs to be a policy down the line where we're not going to refuse them if, you know, they're not skippers and stuff. They need to be able to use the bathroom without having to tell the teacher why. And I've heard it from all different schools, from the girls in there, that they have to hold or the teacher asks them too many personal questions about do they really need to use the bath? If a girl tells you they need to use the bathroom, we don't need to ask questions. We just should send her to the bathroom. So I encourage you guys to do something before the school year starts. Thank you.
Lastly?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Ms. Paulson would like to come to speak to the board about special needs.
Thank you, guys, for coming to us. So I've been on vacation, but during the vacation, I've also spoke to my special needs. I'm asking you guys, because again, I didn't know this was going to be addressed. You obviously know that this is like, tugs at my heart because of my son. I looked at to become a paraplegic. Everything that I know of a mother of an autistic child, what I would expect a paraplegic, the job duties is not... Those job duties are not equipped to handle autistic children. So I'm here again with another solution, possibly. If you guys can make me a position for the paraplegics, I don't care. I would rather do what I can, even if it's cherry, I don't care. But please make me a position where I can help you guys because this has to stop.
Have you gone through the process of applying?
I talked to the superintendent. I just, I'm asking you guys, please, because if I can do something to help, I'm a mother of an autistic child. I have a couple of ideas about the special needs that I'm working with. Please, before another kid gets hurt, please, whatever you guys can do because this is at my heart.
I understand. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, on under citizen participation, we have board follow-up.
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted just to make a comment. You know, we had some comments that came forward. But the first one, you know, we have a large student population, over 20,000, 2,700 staff, many visitors that come into our buildings. Our practices and procedures, and I talked earlier about safety, that's got to be the top priority in any situation. When there is an isolated incident like the one, you know, that was described, individuals fail to follow training that we've provided, does not adhere to the high standards or expectations and our core values, or allow their personal frustrations to possibly place the students in harms way, we must, we will, and we do take the necessary steps to ensure safety for all involved. During the unfortunate situation that occurred at one of our schools that was commented on, actions were very swift. In fact, I was on the phone when it came to my attention directing, we had the human resources department who's here right now, swift investigation, deliberate. It was in accordance with practices and procedures. Personnel were immediately removed from the school. Investigation started immediately. All parties involved were contacted. Extra time was taken to ensure that, you know, parents of the students in the classrooms were also contacted regarding the situation. It is very unfortunate, unacceptable when individuals act in such a manner that could place student emotional or physical harm. Absolutely, we won't stand for that. For this, there really is no excuse. I do stand behind the quick action that we took to rectify the situation. And I would say that this one incident does not take away from the thousands of staff members that we have that, you know, represent the care, kindness, compassion that our professionals have to give each and every day, you know, because we do have outstanding staff that are providing support for our students. However, you know, that staff member is no longer with us and again, we took swift action within that situation.
Did you also have an update on curriculum that you wanted to?
Oh, sure. And I can also do the curriculum. I have a couple. We, so there was the one on, do you want me, I've got two that kind of tie together with media specialists. So we're looking at the media specialists. I know you had asked me to talk about this. There is a process, I think it was a board request that came at one previous meeting as well. And we're looking to tighten in that. These media specialists are currently trained, you know, as library science specialists. And then they would do reviews of materials that come into the media centers. But as we are with the curriculum, we're looking at tightening that process and working together with the media specialists from central office to possibly implement other procedures. But again, they're trained at screening the materials. And so we want to make improvements moving forward and tighten that up. So we are looking to do that, you know, based on some of the concerns that have been brought forward. And our instructional team and our executive directors, Ms. Farage, Mr. Martin, Ms. Sauer, will be involved, leading some of that with Dr. Grover. I also want to mention that we are, and I know we've had some communications here, we're looking at the human health and development curriculum that state required. It's, a committee, a sex education advisory board is going to be put in place. And we're soon, we're getting ready, but we are soon going to be putting out communications along with a survey for parents. Now, we're going to let it stay out there for a little while because we understand it's the summer and not everyone's always in tune with what's going on. So what we're going to do is get the survey out there and then we're probably going to do a second push. And then when everyone returns from summer break, we will then take, you know, recommendations to serve on that committee for that curriculum. I have one more follow-up if you like it well, since I have them all together, just on cultural sensitivity, we're moving forward with that. We've done that kind of training in the past, but we're bringing in another consultant. And I have a meeting on Wednesday that we're going to be meeting myself and a few administrators. And we're looking at actually bringing some of that directly into HFEC, but also for the entire district. Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
Dr. Malak, for that committee, what kind of number of members are we looking for?
I don't recall executives. Do you remember how many? I think maybe a number of 30 or 40, is that, was that in the ballpark? Yeah. Yeah. So we're going to, there may be more that, you know, apply, just like we've had in other committees, and then we'll have to do a review to select those committee members.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Next item, please. Action items? Special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
We're going to pull number 14, just to pull it. And we may bring it forward another, another time. Table it.
And if I can comment too, there may be some ability to get some federal funding that might be able to help with this so that Mr. Andrews, we had a conversation, or we're going to look into that.
So are we looking for a motion?
Yes.
So should we table or we, that's?
I was just going to pull it and perhaps put it on since it hasn't been moved yet. There hasn't, but either way.
Oh, yeah. That's fine.
Yeah, there hasn't been a move. So I can pull 14 for another day. It doesn't have to be tabled.
Okay.
Okay, so then recommended action, move that action items numbered, numbered one through 13, 15 through 23 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of 14. Is that be correct in the verbiage?
Yes.
Did anybody get a chance if they wanted to pull?
No. No, not yet. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No exceptions yet, except we're pulling 14. We're just taking it out of there. It hasn't been moved, so it doesn't need any issues or any, any attention.
You want to read that verbiage about?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there?
Yes.
No, I already read that. The, are there any agenda items on the agenda? Yeah, I already read that.
Is there anything anyone wants?
I have questions, but not, nothing.
Trustee Thorp?
I've got a question on number eight, but I do not need it pulled.
Okay.
Do you want me to reread the recommended action? Move that action items numbered one through 13, 15 through 25 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of 14.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
I moved it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Petchikoff and supported by Trustee Barry, was it?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
A question.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's getting late. My apologies. Go ahead, Trustee Thorp. What was your question?
Yeah, number eight is again about the roofing at Fortson. And we had just approved this back in March, not too long ago. And now all of a sudden, there's additional work. And my question is, how can we miss by so much in such a short period of time?
So when we did our investigations on the roof, we did it with trying to, because we know that we have a lot of needs in the district with a budget that we have to spread out as far as we can. So when we looked at this project, we went into it with a high contingency, knowing that, you know, when you're looking at a roof and we're, and the reason why we're up there is because we have water infiltrations. Once you get down underneath it, you can't, you can't see once you pull the, in this case, the slate shingles off. So once we did, we saw that there was more need after getting into it. And therefore, so when we looked at this, right now, the scope, the original scope of work, with a budget conscious, was only doing half of the roof over Fortson's auditorium. After getting into it and seeing the need, the design team and construction team and myself and my team, district team, we all agreed that doing the remainder of all of the auditorium roof would be in our best interest right now because we already have the crew there. We already have the lifts rented and with the escalation down the road, it'd be cheaper for us to do it now and then, instead of later down the road.
So going along that line, previously, we had approved 443 to do half the roof. Now we're getting the other half for 160.
Not necessarily. The original agenda item was for a slate roof to be replaced over classrooms and over the media center. The scope of work in the original one was only for half of the auditorium. We're requesting a budget to do the remainder of the auditorium portion.
So that, that original amount that I mentioned was for all the work, not just the auditorium?
Correct. That's correct. When we went, when we first looked into this, we gave an estimate of 1.2 million for everything that I'm requesting for today. So we're still under that budget because we got some good prices. The company that's doing this work, they do a lot of work out at U of M with all of their old buildings and slate roof. This is one that worked in our favor. They needed some work, so they gave us an aggressive number on it.
Thank you.
Trustee Moses?
I have the same question as Trustee Thorp, but he already asked that. But I have questions on other items. On the cone elevators, I know that we're putting money into upgrading. Is this a huge upgrade for those elevators? I know Mr. Andrews, you might not. Are you working with that?
Yeah, I can answer that for you.
So those have to be replaced to, for the VoIP connection. Do we have to do that now for every elevator that is using the old technologies?
Passenger elevators. By law, in order for us to have our passenger elevators operating, we have to have an emergency phone. So to get to the VoIP, what we're basically looking at in a nutshell, well, I shouldn't say this in layman's terms, is the landline. So old landlines that are copper lines that supply, you know, the phone line on our elevators, they're getting old, they're getting outdated. And the problem that we're running into is with the supply chain. It's hard to get just a vendor out, let alone the materials replace a copper line if it were to go down. This board action item would allow us to convert all of our passenger elevators to wireless mobile. And so that would eliminate, if we ever had an elevator go down, we'd be able to keep that elevator operational because we're, we're seeing that it could take, and I can let Mr. Eddy talk further on this because his department helped us put this together. We could see us into an ADA compliance issue if one of the phones went down. I could see the elevator being down for at least six months.
So how many of our, our buildings are very old? So I suspect that we're going to be doing this for all of the elevators?
All of, so we have many elevators and we call them elevators on our list. We have material lift elevators, we have freight elevators, and we have passenger elevators. We're only have to have these phone lines on the passenger, on the passenger ones, correct?
About how many are there in the district, passenger elevators?
23.
And I had a question on the busing. And as far as buying the buses, the price for a used bus now, according to this contract, is about 91,000?
Correct. We added some option to it. So we added the five-camera surveillance system. We added the GPS and also the two-way radio. So it's equally equipped like our buses that we have.
And what would you say the condition of the bus would be? Is it very?
They're in very good condition, yes.
And how many years they've been?
So they're 2019, that's the model number, but they've only had about 3.5 years of service of on the road. They're between 35,000 to 40,000 miles on each one. We have buses that are reaching 17 years old with 120, 140,000. So there's a lot of life left in these buses.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts? Yes. President McDonald?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Do you have a summary of agenda items?
Oh, yes, please. Number one, approval of an award to Integrated Design Solutions. Number two to three, approval of an award to Delta Network Services LLC. Number four, approval of an award to communities and schools. Number five, approval of an award to Playworks. Number six, approval of an award to Cone. Number seven, approval of an award to Cognia. Number eight through 10, approval of change orders. Number 11, approval of change orders per board report 22 hyphen 08. Number 12, approval of an award to Holland Bus Company per board report 22 hyphen 09. Number 13, approval of an award to Simon Companies per board report 22 hyphen 10. Number 14, approval of an award.
We pulled that.
I'm sorry. Number 15, rethink, thank you. Approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 19, approval of financial statement. Number 12, number 20, approval of the adoption of the superintendent's completed evaluation. Number 21, approval of donations. Number 22, appointment, approval of appointment of Principal at Henry Ford Elementary School. And number 23, approval of appointment of Principal at Gear Park Elementary School.
Thank you.
So we have two new appointments here and I would like to call them up to the podium. I know they have family members here. If we can first congratulate Ms. Hannah Farage, the new principal at Gear Park, and allow her to come up and address the board.
Good evening. Dr. Malak, all board members, community members, executive cabinet who is here. I will make this quick. My husband promised we would celebrate with Dairy Queen after. So a cherry dip sounds really good right now. I just want to say thank you to the hiring committees. The fact that you place so much trust and faith in me really is an honor and I will take it so seriously. I am so excited about this next step. To my Stout community, I was lucky enough to have three years at Stout, worked with some wonderful families, wonderful staff, and amazing students, and I will always cherish my time there. The staff at Gear Park, past and present, the Gear Park family, thank you for your tremendous support over the past 14 years that I've been in and out of Gear Park. You've always been there for me and I hope now that I can be there for you as your principal and really excited about what we, what we're going to be able to do together. And finally, my family, I know that you're all very proud of me, but I want you to know that you are my pride and joy. Thank you again for being here. My mom and dad, if you could just stand up for just one second. Thank you. I appreciate it, everyone.
Congratulations.
And we also have Ms. Mariam Farhat, the new principal at Henry Ford Elementary. Let her come up. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. Trustees, President McDonald, Superintendent Malak, thank you for entrusting me with this new role. I want to thank my family, my mentor, and my colleagues for their continued support. And I'm really excited for this upcoming school year as I move into this new role and continue to serve the students of Dearborn Public Schools, specifically Henry Ford and the community there. So thank you.
Congratulations. Now, before we move on, one of the things that we just approved was the superintendent's evaluation. The board just finished conducting the evaluation for Dr. Malak. And I want to express that we have rated him. We have found him to be highly effective. So thank you, Dr. Malak, for your work, your dedication to the district. And we appreciate all you do with a very positive attitude. So thank you.
Thank you. If I could just quickly comment, I appreciate the board. Appreciate the chair taking as well and all the board members who are involved in the committee. And we've been through, you know, challenging times over the last two years. It's probably been, we can say, the toughest in my career, I can say. I'm sure a lot of you can say that, but we've stuck together. We've kept our students and our community safe and we should be proud despite the challenges. So I want to thank the board for the partnership. I want to thank our great staff. I know we have union heads here, our staff members. I want to thank our students, our parents, our administrators, and the entire community for working together to serve and do what's best with that sign that's up there that we carry around, you know. We have to have a great staff and a great community that work hard, top-notch, to put students first. So thank you, everyone. Thank you to the board.
Absolutely.
Madam President?
Trustee Moser?
Yeah. One of, also the items that we approved is the CIS contract, the community in schools. And all of the encounters that I have had with their employees have been very positive, very welcoming. I've heard a lot of parents also thanking the CIS employees that we have in our schools who are working with our students and our families. So I'd like to also thank them for their service to our schools in conjunction with our own staff, our teachers and parapros and staff. Thank you. And administrators.